We just want to get invited up amongst the rest of the room.
Yeah.
So we shouldn't that come before you?
We just came on today, so.
We approve that.
Now, we approve fishing and hunting.
Oh, okay. Remember, Cooper should come back.
That was fish for hunting or something.
Not all of them.
Makes sense.
But I didn't challenge him because of this one.
Well, we'll have to push it down.
I do have a problem. Does everybody have to fill out an application, but I see Paterno just sent an email.
We're gonna move forward. It's gonna be staff. A little practice has to be appointed by the staff.
Okay, but I guess I still need to...I don't know.
How else are you gonna do business in a city if somebody doesn't apply for something to show?
Well, I...
Either an email or...
Well, and I get that, but it needs to be universal, so it's not because in this form, they have to claim party affiliation, how long they've been there, their date of birth, a lot of other information that doesn't even be on there.
Yeah.
And that's now all public, but one other person now doesn't have to show it.
And I make it to the staff, so when I go to the party, it's gonna be staff all applied in and with Kent Cooper on the staff side.
Okay, well, this is a thing that I do, is a long-term...
I agree that because we're not...
Okay, let's get started. Are we good to go?
Can everybody please join me in the pledge allegiance?
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Cherry, would you call Ralph, please? Marla? Never know.
Mayor Nicholson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanger?
Here.
Councilmember Durst?
Here.
Espinoza?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Love.
Okay, we have a quorum. We'll move on down to a public hearing, resolution, physically your 2019-2020 budget amendment number one. Don't have anything on that. We'll move on down to citizens' participation. Everybody will have five minutes to speak tonight. Anybody like to come up and speak? Okay, go ahead, Scott.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'd just like to thank the council for their support the last couple weeks with a personal tragedy, and I'd thank staff, I'd thank Dustin stepping up, and the staff for keeping things going in my absence and the flexibility to attend to the things I needed to do. Thank you.
Good thoughts were with you, Scott.
Amen, Mayor.
Anybody else that'd like to speak? If not, we'll move on down to the city council reports. The first one we have is the Board of Adjustments. That would be myself, and I have nothing to report. Next item would be COG, and that would be myself also, and I have nothing to report there.
There's a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me. So there is a meeting tomorrow for COG in...
Hannah.
In Hannah, at six o'clock. Next, we'll move down to DDA, Councilwoman Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. DDA has been very busy this summer, but the most recent event they've undertaken was the Pride and Passion Ball on September 7th. It was very successful, and it was with a downtown splash pad. And we don't have all of the figures completely down to the last penny, but we think somewhere around $40,000 was raised, so it was our highest yield yet, and the community was wonderful. So I just wanted to put that out there. The Splash Pad Committee will be getting together next month to finalize the design to, God forbid, early in 2020, and hopefully for completion by Friday, July 10th, to kick off the Summer Fest in 2020. Okay, Dates to Remember is a facade celebration on September 24th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. There'll be a presentation at 6:00 p.m. at the depot, and she says this tenure program is coming to a successful close, but we'll be able to show folks and give tours and have a little celebration going then. Artbee will be Friday, October 4th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., and Saturday, October 5th from 10:00 to 2:00 p.m. Rollins DDA has received two quotes from Squad...my mouth isn't working tonight, for skyline lighting on the top of the downtown buildings, and they're working through the steps with legal installation, electric, and they'll be meeting with property owners soon on the lighting. And they would like to have them in by the holidays, so we'll mark that on the calendar. I'd love it, too. Special announcement is that we want you to mark your calendars, starting Tuesday, September 24th, in one week. We, the downtown, the city, and the state will be asking you, the community, to vote online every day to help Rollins, Wyoming win critical preservation funding. Stay tuned for more details. And then, just I want to slide in really quick, the draft on the Great Divide Economic Group has been received yesterday by Cindy Wallace in the Economic Development Office. I'll get a copy of that and get that out to you. We're going to have a meeting on that to finalize it before she leaves us, so, thank you.
Thank you, Linda. And we'll move on down to Rollins Planning Commission, Councilman Espinoza.
Mayor Nicholson and Council, I don't have nothing to report. We had a lack of quorum, so our next meeting will be October 8th.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on down to Urban Systems, Councilman Sanger.
Nothing new to report.
Okay. I'll move on down to item five minutes, approval of the minutes from September 3rd, 2019, regular minutes. Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 3rd, 2019, as presented.
You have a second from Councilwoman Smith? Any questions or comments in regards to that motion? If not, Marla, would you open online voting?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yays.
Thank you. I'll move on down to Correspondence Reports and Information, item A, Local Government Liability Pool, Board Vacancy Notices.
Honorable Mayor and council members, the city received notice from the local government liability pool of Wyoming that they will be accepting nominations for board vacancies. Two board positions will be open as of January 1st, 2020. One opening is for a county commissioner position, and one is an at-large position. The board positions are three-year terms, and each LGLP member may nominate someone for the positions. Nominations for the county commissioners shall only be from a governmental entity that participates in the pool, and we participate in that pool. The at-large position can be someone that doesn't participate in the pool, so it can be anyone that's nominated and voted on.
Okay.
So nominations are to be received by LGLP's office no later than October 31st, 2019, and any nominations received after that date will not be considered. And I included the forms that they sent. If you'd like me to send the nominations to LGLP, what I read here, anybody can nominate someone.
Okay.
So I was gonna ask, so is the city the member, or is...
The city is...the city is the member.
So does the city make one nomination, or does... You see what I mean?
I do. I believe, and Linda, you sit on this board, so please correct me if I'm incorrect, by reading what LGLP sent, anyone can make a nomination for the board.
May I, if I may, Mayor?
Go ahead.
The other thing is that this board can nominate a person that we would like to serve. If we have someone who is on a special district or is working with us, we can nominate that person for in that large position.
Okay.
What was the date on that, Marla? October 31st?
31st.
Okay.
Could I just address that maybe a little bit further?
Sure, go ahead.
The current chairman is Brad Bassi, who is at-large, and we switched, I was at-large, and I went to the council position to allow him to run for that. And so he does not know if he's going to run again, and then the county commissioner from Sheridan has told us that he is not going to run for county commissioner again, so he will, his position will be wide open. So we have someone I think would be good, we should probably nominate.
Any more questions on that? We'll move on down to item B, the Wyoming Community Gas 2019 Projects.
So each year, Wyoming Community Gas returns thousands of dollars in revenue to member communities for designated community projects to benefit our citizens and community. The City of Rollins will receive this year $10,147.07 from Wyoming Community Gas for a community project. The Wyoming Community Gas Board decided to distribute the project checks in May of 2020. Total distribution each year is based on anticipated monies received by Wyoming Community Gas from June of 2019 to May of 2020. Wyoming Community Gas Board of Directors request a designated project for our community as soon as possible, but preferably no later than December 31st, 2019. I sent this information out to city council, and at this time, I've received two suggestions. Phase two art project for the Sixth Street Walking Tunnel. Phase one would be the Washington Street Walking Underpass. That was completed with some Wyoming Community Gas funds. And another project was to replace handrails, et cetera, at the playground, on the playground equipment at Tully Park. Please contact me if you have any other suggestions for community projects. This item will be placed on the October 15th, 2019 Agenda for Council's Action to approve a project.
Do you have a question?
Go ahead, Lou. Go ahead, Lou. Came up with three that maybe the council might consider, and when I was down at Music in the Park, I was noticing some of the people that were handicapped with chains and walkers going up to those vendors. There's such a slope right there for them to try handing, you know, while they're trying to order something from the vendors. I thought maybe we should continue the sidewalk there at Washington Park, so they'll have a flat surface. The other one was some of those light poles that are there at Washington Park. It'd be nice to possibly replace those with decorative light poles. And there was a third one, oh, that piece of property that the city's gonna be owning or whatever there by the nurses' quarters to make the north side of that as a handicap parking, where you could probably fit cars maybe in there? Hard to say, but that way, you know, people that do park there in handicap parking have an easier access to the music in the park or whatever they do there. Oh, anyway, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Lou. Councilman Durst?
I guess I was just a little confused, because I thought that they had stopped giving the money to the city, or they had opened it up to nonprofits as well?
So they have two...
Is that two separate programs?
Two separate programs.
Okay, I thought that was a confusion.
I think what you're thinking about is the grant program.
Okay, okay. Very possibly so.
Councilman Durst?
My question was with the monies we had last year. We had the star. I don't know where we're at with that. We had a sign that was gonna be built at Martinez Park. We're working on the sign and the bench still. The bench was ordered, and it...yeah, was a problem with the ordering or something? Yeah, so we're moving along. We'll get the...we'll have those done.
There wasn't a problem with the bench, it's still in process, and we're just waiting to receive it. It has been ordered.
Yeah, okay. All right, I was just wondering where was that?
And I can't answer that part.
We're still waiting on the welding guys to tell us whether they can do it. Still welding up there? No, whether they can do it. They have a new welding guy, so they don't know if they can do it.
Okay.
All right, well, maybe we'll have to redesign something.
And I'll put something together and get it out to you with the five now projects that we have, and some decide.
Thank you, Marla. Next, we'll move on down to Department Monthly Reports. Anybody have any questions or comments in regards to that? We'll move on down to item seven, Approval of Tonight's Agenda. Can you get a motion for that? Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve the September 17th, 2019, city council agenda as presented.
I couldn't. We have a first and a second. Any questions or comments in regards to that motion? If not, Marla, would you open online voting?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with six yays.
Okay. Now, we'll move on down to Board Appointments, on Street Parking Advisory Group. All right, so we have some applicants here that sent in some interest to be on this advisory board. I have spoken to one already, which couldn't make it here tonight, and that was John Pacheco. So we'll just move on down here to Kyle Rosentrader, if you would like to come up and speak, or...
What should we bring, a microphone?
Yeah, we could do that.
No, I can make it. Maybe it's a little, but I'll make it.
We got all night. Just briefly tell us about yourself and why you'd want to serve on this board.
Mayor, Councilman? I'm Kyle Rosentrader. I've lived here since 1976, was deputy sheriff for 23 years. Prior to that, welded in the oilfield for City Service Gas Company. The reason why I would like to be on the board is I have lots of trailers, but I have property to park around, so it doesn't matter to me which way it goes, but to sit on the board and hear what all we can come up with. The other thing that I don't know if everybody's aware of it, I go all over United States certified K-9 teams, and I take my camp trailer to stay in, because it's easy for me to get in a wheelchair and out and stuff. Anyhow, I've been to lots of cities with no trailers on the street, and to cities that you can park a trailer on the street and have talk to individuals about it both ways, and so I felt this would be a community I could be on and be looked at as law enforcement and also as a citizen and a person with trailers, but also I have a place to park them, it goes either way.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we'll move on down to Ralph Glenn. Would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the committee?
Name's Ralph Glenn. I served eighteen and a half years on the council, and during that time, was on the Board of Adjustments, I belonged to COG, the Planning Commission, the Urban System, and the Land Rec Board. Also spent ten years on the TEO Board, that's the state board that gives the money to do the depot, do all your walk paths and stuff. And in that ten years I spent, six years of it I wasn't a councilman. You were supposed to be a councilwoman. I was recommended by, the city put my name in, the WAM, and WAM only recommended my name to the state, so the state, the governor appointed me. And then when my term was up, I was a member of the council, but the WAM recommended the state keep me on it, so I did, until they changed things around. I don't think the TEO Board's even in use anymore, so, but anyway. I got trailers among, I never park them on the street, I'm only down the street, but I'm interested in more of the traffic, you know? Because you go down the streets, and if they're not parked in a certain area, you can't see. There are traffic hazards, some of them, and it depends on if you're gonna let people stay in them. If you get the slide outs and they're close to the street, you know, they will be cause of a traffic hazard, and that's one reason I'd like to be on there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ralph. Next, we have is Tanya Lumen. Please come up and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to sit on the board.
I'm Tanya Lumen. I know most of you know me, because I am more than welcome to share my opinion on things. I just feel this is an opportunity for me to serve on a board. I do not have any trailers, campers, anything like that, so I'm not biased either way as far as where they should be, but I am very glad it has gone to a committee, because I feel it is a topic like the deer, where you have half the people in town want them all up the street, and the other half want them all on the street, and hopefully we can gather some information to show it is a problem or it isn't a problem, and some viable solutions. I would welcome the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya. Next, we have Judy Dixon, if you'd like to come up and tell us about yourself and why you'd like to be on the board.
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson, Council. I'm Judy Dixon. I've been a registered nurse for 30 years in Rollins at the hospital, and after that, I taught the CNA program at the Carbon County Higher Ed, and then I retired, happily with my fifth wheel, Rob's boat, side by side, which we haul in a cargo trailer. So I have a, and a property owner, so I have a vested interest in this topic. In my heart, I'll tell you right up front, my personal opinion is that I do not like the idea of having permanent parking of RVs on our Rollins streets, for a variety of reasons, not least of which is the aesthetics in the community. On the other hand, I realize that there are people who have purchased homes with the idea that they would be able to do that, or they bought RVs knowing they could park them in front of their homes. So I think that, and having served on the city council in the past as well, I know it's always, we've addressed it before, you've addressed it before, and I think appointing a committee is a great idea. So I would just like to serve on it, because I think that between the two sides, we can come together with some kind of a resolution that will work for the city as a whole.
Thank you, Judy. Next, we have Janita Colton. If you'd like to come up and tell us about yourself and why you'd like to be on the board? Hopefully I pronounced your name right.
You did, you did very well. I'm Janita Colton. I've lived in Rollins for 29 years, own a home here, and I'd like to serve on this committee, because I'm very concerned about the safety on the streets, especially in the wintertime. And I don't own trailers, and I have quite a bit of board experience in other groups, and feel like I could maybe be a contributor to that, contributor to solving problems with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have Cheryl Bailey. If you'd like to come up and tell us about yourself and why you'd like to be on the board.
You'll notice a number of us walk very slowly, and that's the whole thing, it's a safety issue on the streets, for those of us that cannot get across best. My name is Cheryl Bailey. I have lived here since July of 2000. I moved here because I love the community. I will stay here because I love the community, but as you've noticed from some of my letters to the editor and speaking here at the council before, that I am extremely concerned and upset that there are so many trailers, boats, and RVs parked on our streets, which as the other people have said, is definitely a safety issue. I have actually had a little kid run out in front of a trailer. Fortunately, I don't go past the 30 miles per hour, and I was able to stop, and his father was there and lectured him, and then the little boy turned and waved to me. Hopefully, the lecture was "be careful." But I want us all, as a community, to be careful about the children and us slow-moving elderly that need to cross streets when you can't see what's coming. There are a couple of streets in town that are extremely wide. Maybe one of my ideas is you could maybe designate those as the parking streets for trailers. But the majority of our streets are so narrow, you can't even get one car down when there are cars and trailers parked on both sides of the street. I would be glad to serve on this committee and keep my opinion going. I do not own a camper, trailer, or boat or anything. I have plenty of place in front of my own home where people would be welcome to park theirs. I'm gonna charge them, though, because I do not believe that they belong on our city streets. I will again refer to Mr. Sanger's comment, "Our city streets are thoroughfares, not parking lots." Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. The last one we have here is Dodge, and I cannot pronounce the first name. Is it Martha?
Martha.
Martha, okay. Could you please come up, Martha, and tell us about yourself and why you'd like to be on it?
I go by Marty.
Marty, okay.
I never liked my name. When I got away from home, I changed it. Marty.
My husband and I have lived here for 17 years. We came here from the Bahamas, where obviously parking on the street is not a problem, especially in wintertime. But we came from the east, and there, many towns have signs posted that you cannot park on the street from the 1st of November till the 1st of April, so that they can plow, which is something we don't get in Orencho, but that's neither here nor there. But I do think there's a very big safety factor. I know that there's somebody parked kitty-corner from us, that when you come down Los Altos, you cannot see who's coming from the right-hand side, and I, we had a tree in our front yard when we first bought our house, and somebody hit it and took it out. And so I think there is concern about safety. I worry about the children, because it seems like 30 miles doesn't, an hour doesn't get because it seems like thirty miles doesn't, an hour doesn't get obeyed very much. But that's not the issue with the trailers and boats. I've had to have the rescue squad several times. And when they come, the police and the fire department come too. And so you get all these vehicles. And on some of these streets, I don't know how you could get those vehicles down there to stop to take care of whoever they've been called for. And so I think that if it could be a one-way street and only parking on one side, that might be a solution to that. But I do have concerns. And because I've lived where you couldn't park on the street for part of the year, nobody seemed to find that a real problem. But I know some of these streets are very, very narrow. I think they were, houses were built without driveways or you can't access it from the alley. Like in back of our place on El Rancho, you can get into the alley on the west side. But then people have put up fences. And they've taken up all of that alley space to put it as part of their property. And so I know we'd like to put a shed in our backyard. But we can't access the backyard. Except from the front where they can't get a shed over. And so I have a few concerns. But I love Rawlins. We've been very happy here and I think we intend to stay here forever. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Marty. The next applicant we have here is Mike Lucerno, but Mike, I'm going to hold yours off and allow Scott to come up with a couple of people from staff to put on the board. If you don't mind. Okay, thank you. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to nominate a few people. You know, and initially I was looking at a few people. Maybe four, maybe five. But everybody that came up tonight I think has some pretty valid points. And I'd like to see both, both sides of the scale because I think it's very important that it's not one-sided. That this group really looks at it as a whole and how it's going to affect everybody. So my motion now is to appoint Johnny Pacheco, Kyle Rosentrader, Ralph Quinn, Tanya Lumen, Judy Dixon, Janita Carlton, Cheryl Bailey and Marty Dodge.
I would second that.
Any questions or comments in regards to all that? Councilman Smith?
I move that nomination cease and we cast unanimous vote.
Marla, would you open online voting, please?
This one just reads personally.
I know, I'm not typing as fast as you guys talk.
This is a good thing everybody in town didn't send in the application.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yays.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, Marla, I never voted on that. I mean, I say yes. But I never actually voted.
I didn't vote for you.
Did it really come through?
Yeah.
No, nothing popped on my screen at all.
Wow.
It's our new.
But I will verbally say that I support.
All right, now we'll move on down to unfinished business. Ordinance, second reading, amending Rawlins Municipal Code Title X, Vehicles and Traffic. Can I get a motion?
A motion.
The motions never die.
You need a motion, then you don't second it.
Mayor, point of order. What we could do is move to, move to adopt it and then we just don't make a second.
That's what I was saying.
Councilman Martinez?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we announce the ordinance on second reading, amend the Rawlins Municipal Code Title X, Vehicles and Traffic.
Can we get a second? If there's no second, then the motion dies. Thank you. Now we'll move on down to item E, ordinance, third and final reading, amending Rawlins Municipal Code Title Eight, Health and Safety. Councilman Durst?
I move to postpone the third and final reading until the next meeting. Some of the information that we had requested in the last workshop, we weren't able to get it yet. Two of them, the right-of-way information as far as who technically has the right-of-way, who's responsibility is, we didn't get the feedback on that. And then I had asked for some information on the part where all the customer information is sent to the city clerk and I had asked for some information on that that we weren't able to get to yet as well.
Okay.
So I would, I apologize if I did that all wrong. I should have just shushed that through the motion.
Could I, for clarification, what, what do you exactly want for the right-of-way issue? I wasn't aware of that.
Well, there was, so there's some, and I don't know right off the top of my head, I can find it forwarded to you tomorrow. But there is some, there's some information about, it says everybody's responsible for cutting the trees in the right-of-way. But there was some confusion as to whether the city owned that right-of-way or whether the public owns that right-of-way for that.
It depends on the area of town, but I can give you that information. So we do have that available, so.
Okay.
And I can go back to the, can give you the ordinance and more history than you probably want on it to make a decision and understand that. That'd be for later date, but I could get you that information if you would like. I do have that.
God, if I can interject something, I, I believe that the research was done on it. It came out that apparently I always thought that we voted on that several years ago, they gave the trees to the city. That the trees on the right-of-way belong to the city, but apparently that wasn't the case. I really do remember it, but
Councilman Martinez? Did we get a second before we started any discussion on that?
Sorry, that was my fault. I should have.
Oh, okay, I'll second it.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Now we have a first and a second. We can open the floor.
I can give you some. It was brought to my attention while I was out.
Yes.
Reviewed some historic information. I think I have a little bit more information that may make it clearer.
Okay.
It may be another topic of direction we want to go in the future since some of those positions were eliminated over time.
Okay.
Those are the only two.
That's fine with me, I thought it was addressed.
I'll be prepared for the next meeting.
So now that, I apologize, I shouldn't have explained that, my bad. So my, I only would want to postpone it for just one more time to just get that all put together. I understand why, I mean, I get it.
Right, okay. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any more discussion in regards to that? So the motion is to postpone the third and final reading until the October second, first, October first meeting. Marla, would you open online voting, please?
Let me this time.
I, I could say something to you, but mine will will not change for me when I want to go to the next issue.
Okay. I think there's some voodoo going on.
Something's going on and it's not working really fast.
Yeah.
We can go ahead and do some verbal, Marla.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
And Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion? The motion is closed and it carries with six yays.
Councilwoman Smith?
Clerk, Madam Clerk? I am not getting the little bar to vote and yet I'm turning up voting yes.
Yeah.
I did vote yes, but this happened the last time. But something's got some little monsters running around somewhere, gremlins.
They're called gremlins.
So has, did everybody vote correctly? I mean, is that right?
I voted yes.
Okay.
I have six yays.
All right, we will move on down to new business. Approval of the payroll. Councilman Singer?
Move to approve the August eighteenth, 2019 through August thirty-first, 2019 payroll register for two hundred twenty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second. We have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion in regards to that motion? If there's no discussion, Marla would you open online voting? And my team?
Your on my phone.
So I'm getting the, the box to vote. But my screen is still stuck on the citizens parking.
It might be, it's working for me, that's all I can say.
Ain't working for me either.
Because I still don't have Martinez's or your vote.
I just say yes.
I'd say yes.
Okay, did everybody else vote yes?
Yes.
So the next one, we have approval of accounts payroll. Councilwoman Smith?
I move to approve the accounts payroll register for the period of August thirtieth, 2019 to September eleventh, 2019 in the amount of five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, forty-eight dollars and eighty-four cents.
I'll second. Councilman Singer?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions or comments in regards to that motion? If there's not, Marla would you open online voting? Would you like to do a verbal vote?
Yes. Say yes.
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes. Sorry about that, but mine ain't opening up.
Motion carries with six yays.
Okay, thank you, Marla. We'll move on down to item C, Resolution, Tully Park Final Replant. Danielle's going to fill us in on that.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm bringing the final plat for Tully Park to you guys. Both you guys reviewed or approved the preliminary plat as well as Planning Commission. It did go back to the Planning Commission for final and they approved that as well with no changes from the first one. So just a refresher, we are dividing it into Track A, B, and C. And there's also a small piece of the corner that's actually El Rancho Road that we will vacate. If you have questions, I will answer.
We get a motion? Councilman Durst?
I move to approve the resolution approving the final plat of Tully Park as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Councilwoman Smith? So we have a first and a second. Any questions or discussion in regards to that?
Is this the swap with the hospital?
So this is the plat so that we will have a proper legal description, so I will, if you guys approve this tonight, work on getting the milars signed and then filed with the county and I believe legal will take it over from here to actually do the swap portion.
So this actually breaks it up into the different plats so that we're able to do something with a certain part?
Right, and still retain the park areas.
I guess my question would be, what would be the argument against it?
If you disagreed?
Don't think that's the right choice or something?
There's no, no more questions? Marla, would you open online voting, please? Thank you, Danielle.
Yes.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yays.
Then we'll move on down to item D, a resolution for 2020 and fourteen underage drinking laws. Grant, a UEDL grant.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the Rawlins Police Department requesting approval from the city to submit a grant to the YWAN Association of Sheriff's and Chiefs of Police in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-five cents. The grant subsidizes costs incurred for additional police efforts in enforcing underage drinking laws specifically during Carbon County School District Number One games and dances, music in the, in the park and during specific targeted dates throughout the year.
The motion? Councilwoman Smith?
Move to approve the resolution authorizing the submission of the YWAN Association of Sheriff and Chiefs of Police 2020 Enforcing Underage Drinking Grant in the amount of three thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-five cents to provide and enhance collaborative efforts in support, protection, and education regarding underage drinking in the youth of Rawlins.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions or comments in regards to that? I would just like to add on the resolution page, it has McGowan as Stephen L. Nicholson. We'll typo that. We'll correct that to Stephen S. Marla, would you open online voting?
Sure.
Yeah, I've got one running there.
Yeah, he's busy tonight.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yays.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. We'll move on down to item E, Resolution, Carbon County Specific Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board Joint Powers Agreement.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, the Specific Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board is starting to work and get on a roll. Barbara Bonds is the Bonds Attorney out of Cheyenne that the that the Joint Powers Board is going to use again and she sent to all the clerks of the municipalities of Carbon County this resolution to add Dixon and Hannah as members because they didn't bond their projects on the 2009 question. So we're adding them to this new question and change the name of the board, removing 2009 from the title so bonds can be issued for financing projects no matter the year of the commencement of the tax.
Councilman Durst?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the resolution and the amendment of the Joint Powers Agreement and add Dixon and Hannah as members and change the name of the board by removing the 2009 from the title so that bonds can be issued for financing projects no matter the year of the commencement of the tax.
Can we get a second? Councilman, what's, Espinoza?
Sorry.
Second. I'm losing it up here. Okay, we have a first and a second. Is there any questions in regards to that motion? Any questions from Marla? If not, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yays.
We'll move on down to F, Resolution, Fiscal Year 2019 through 2020 Budget Amendment Number One.
Honorable Mayor and Council, before you, is a budget amendment resolution for some cleanup items that we have. In current budget, I did send a little more detail out for better understanding from the operations standpoint of what these budget amendments accomplish. It's a total of a hundred thirty-seven, five, a hundred thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. These will come out in addition to our fund balance if we do have. Any questions?
Get a motion? Councilman Singer?
Move to approve the fiscal year 2019, 2020 Budget Amendment Resolution Number One as presented.
Councilwoman Smith?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Does anybody have any? Does anybody have any discussion?
I saw that this was just, just a transfer, like just cleaning up one to another, wasn't it? Wasn't it just a couple transfers to...
It is an increase to our fund balance.
I'm sorry, it's just not popping up at the moment, you know?
Yeah.
It's a gremlin. I, I did see it, but that was a couple days.
When we do the initial budget, we estimate the fund balance. We do have enough room to cover this, if we raise the fund balance, it'll still be fine. Um, and then, recreation portion is just a transfer of funds from the general. Um, it is a section of the general fund, and it has its own fund, so that portion is a transfer.
I have a question, I don't know if it's appropriate at this time. It has to do with, uh, the budget. In regard to the Tin Can Hill project, the funding for that project, um, I would like to see us, that before any money is used out of that budget, that it comes before the council, and, uh, and so that's, that's, that's the question I'm putting before the bo- the, the council is that, and I make a bu- uh, I'll make a motion to that effect. Since we're talking about changing the budget, we might as well add that in there, too.
That would have to come up on, to be put on the agenda, um, for an item to be voted on or an amendment.
While we're discussing the budget.
Well, I know, but you're asking for an action item, and there's already an action item that we're, we're talking about, that they're not related, they're, they are budget, but they're two different budgetary type items. We just have to...
Okay, then, okay, go ahead, we'll vote on this one, and then I'll ask to have that placed on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, is that correct?
That would be the correct way. Okay, so we have a first and a second. Any more discussion in regards to this one? If not, um, Marla, would you open online voting? Yes.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yeas.
Now, Councilman Mar- Martinez, if you wanna...
I'm requesting a change in our budget, not a change in the figures or the amount or the project, it's just that I, I feel that, um, when it comes time to start spending money out of that budget that we appropriated for the Tin Can Hill project, that, uh, the staff come before the council and tell us what they're gonna do before they spend the money.
So would you like to have that placed on the next agenda by resolution?
I thought we could do it now with, by a motion.
So you're gonna...
Rather than put it in, I was gonna do it as a resolution, but I thought we could do it just as a, as a motion and see what this council felt about that.
So a motion from the floor, and you're seeking a second?
I'm seeking a second, that's the motion.
Okay, so you gotta give me a minute so I can add this to the agenda, okay?
Okay, yeah.
I'm gonna just put Tin Can Hill project, property project?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so can I read this back to you?
Go ahead.
And tell me if I understand it properly? So the motion's gonna be moved to approve prior to any money spent on the Tin Hat, Tin Can Hill Property Project expenditures of funds will be presented to City Council.
Sounds right.
Okay.
So we'll need a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Any discussion in regards to that?
Okay, now I gotta refresh.
Scott?
Honorable Mayor and Council, when the city council, at the time, agreed to venture into this project and down the road, we put our share of money away there to secure grant funding, uh, with the obligation, the intent, to see this project through. Uh, I don't know why this project would be any different than the other $31 million that are appropri- appropriated by the budget and are handled through a purchasing policy that has been adopted by the city council. And to put another layer of oversight on that, I think is burdensome for the project and everything else. We've agreed to go to that, we'll present the project. If the council wants to back out of the project and we can return all the money, we would be happy to do that, too. Uh, but to add another layer of this, uh, as in good faith, it was our gesture to put some money in the pot to move forward for this project, uh, and we have a purchasing policy that's established, and this is kind of going outside those parameters of our normal purchasing policy, I would just recommend against that.
Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman Dorr.
In response to that, Scott, my thinking is this, that I have no problem with the project, I've always told you that. Where I have a project and I've never seen any numbers, I've never seen any numbers of how, how much it's gonna cost, I've never seen how many, any numbers as to who's gonna pay for the upkeep of this project and what we're gonna do there. That's the two things. The other thing is, not one council member here has even discussed or talked other than the information that you've given it to us at work session. We've never been to any meetings, we never met with developers, we haven't done anything, and we're just saying it's okay, and we appropriated $170,000, $75,000. I don't think that's the way we should've went about it myself. Uh, I've been involved with, uh, numerous developments, uh, the, the, the truck stop out, out south of town there, when they came, they opened up a map, they brought their lawyers, they told us how we were gonna do things, they were asking, this is what we want from the city. We went through the whole procedure. This one, we didn't go through anything, other than what you, information you give us. Yes, I did go out there and stand, and I agreed with cleaning up the area, I don't have a problem with that.
I guess the council, um, agreed to apply for the grant.
A problem.
And, and we accepted that, and in good faith, we agreed to put up $175,000 towards the overall project, and at that time, we discussed the dollar amounts that this project could cost the city.
But it didn't tell us how much it's gonna cost to maintain it, we can't maintain what we've got now.
The reason, the reason we haven't given you a cost for the maintaining of it is we haven't finished with the final project scoping and the development of the project.
Okay, so this, but this motion is basically saying to you, when you come up with these numbers and you bring them before us, then we can tell you, go ahead and spend the money. Is that a problem?
No, I tell you what, it would even be better, I'll tell you what, we'll bring you the project, if you don't want to do the project and you don't want to spend the funds, kill the project.
You can do it that way, whatever.
That, that would be a lot better. I, I mean, either way.
That's fine.
Councilman Smith?
That wasn't my intent.
I'm going to speak on behalf of the project because, but against the motion, I think that, uh, the project has been on the books since 1970s, 1980s. It is a drainage project, we've had, um, a development company step up to the plate for their development, they've spent, they've asked that it be confidential for a long period of time, and, um, the preliminary work that has been done with the state agencies is ongoing, and I, I believe in my heart that when it comes time to put figures down on paper, we will get those. I think that maybe what, you may, you maybe need to be included in more of the discussions. Um, but from my point of view, I, we are gonna have to do that drainage ditch, no matter what we do, and this is a way to do it in co- in concert with the state and other private entities, and it'll cost us far less money doing it this way than if we had to go do it ourselves, by ourselves, so. And I don't see a need to putting more restrictions on it, except just to be more informed on what's going on with it from time to time.
Any more questions or comments? Marla, would you open online voting, please? My vote will be a no, Marla. I, uh, what we've been rehearing is, I'm working correctly?
Mind you, yes.
Online voting is closed and the motion fails with Councilmember Martinez and Durst voting yay, and Mayor Nicholson, Vice Mayor Singer, Councilmember Espinoza, and Smith Nay.
We'll move on down to executive session. Get a motion for that? Councilwoman Smith?
Yes, I move that we go into executive session at 8:30 PM pursuant to Wyoming Statute 164405-2 to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice, or dismissal of a public officer, professional person, or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against said employee, professional person, or officer unless the employee, professional person, or officer requests a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, any or, any or all other witnesses in the matter being investigated. Following the hearing, executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session, knowing to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law.
We have a first, we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a se- first and a second. Any questions in regards to that motion? Marla, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with six yeas.
We're in executive session?